Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome again to our Lunch In series. So this is the time where you grab your sandwich and you grab something to drink, sit down with your computer, and we give you the opportunity to meet some Bonneville County Commissioner candidates. And we haven't had this many candidates running for Bonneville County Commissioner for one seat for a long time, so this should be pretty fun. It should be interesting and a good opportunity to learn what each has, to offer the community. A couple of things I wanted to tell you before I introduce them. We really wanted to remind you, while we maybe have the biggest audience at the very beginning of this show, absentee ballots. If you haven't gotten yours yet, you have to vote absentee this year, okay? And it's really imperative that you make the phone call now to your county clerk and get an absentee ballot sent to you. We're running out of time towards the primary, and you do not get to go to your normal places to vote. So there's not going to be a gang of you at the junior high this year, or wherever your polling place was. It's all got to be done in the mail. I even understand some of our Commissioner candidates have strong opinions on whether that was a good idea or not, and maybe we'll get into that today, but just know, that's the rules. So our candidates today, and I like to explain again how we set up, because you know how weird this is with the COVID. We don't get to go campaigning like we did in the old days. So these gentlemen cannot go knock on doors. City Club, the Realtors Association, the Chamber, we can't have forums like we normally do. So we are in a studio at IE Productions in Idaho Falls, and one candidate, Brady Belliston, is sitting six feet away from me, to my right and ahead of me. So the poor guy's back as to me, he can't even see me when I ask the questions. To the right of me will be John Walker, to the left of me Tom Lurcher. All of us six feet apart, and so we felt free to take off our masks at this point. So, once again, just let me introduce you to Brady Belliston. He is running for County Commissioner. John Walker, who's six feet behind him, is six feet away from me, and Tom Lurcher on my left. And we will have opening statements, then we will have question and answer, then we will have closing statements. And I hope by the end of this hour, you'll be full, you'll have had a great lunch, and you will have learned a little bit more about these County Commissioner candidates before you fill out your absentee ballot. Absentee ballot. So if it's all right with you, I'm going to begin on my left. Tom Lurcher and I go way back to the 80s, he was just reminding me. And Tom, that was when you served as a County Commissioner before, and I was a younger, much younger reporter coming in, and you were teaching me the ropes. So will you give us, please, your opening statement?
Thank you, Carol. It's a pleasure to see you again. It's been, it has been a long time since I think we've even talked, but I really appreciate this forum today, and thank especially the City Club and the Chamber and the Realtors for being able to sponsor this. That's a great opportunity. I am Tom Lurcher. I am an active farmer and rancher. I live in Bone, which is just, well, I like to refer to it as the site of the annual international jackalope races. But we do have a cattle ranch there. We have been there for 50 years now. We love it there. We've raised our whole family here. And Linda and I have seven children, or eight children, seven sons and one daughter. My daughter jokingly says, "What's it like to grow up with seven brothers?" And she said, "Well, the rule at our house was the food wasn't yours until you swallowed." But we enjoy Idaho a whole lot. I'm in this race because I've noticed that we do have some problems that we need to work on in Bonneville County. The first one is our tax structure and what we are demanding of our property taxpayers. It's very difficult for people to make ends meet. Just the other day, I got an email from an individual saying they've lived in their home for 30 years, they're on a fixed income, and they don't know whether they're going to be able to continue to live there. That is a shame. And last year, the Bonneville County Commissioner set a budget of $90 million. That's an awfully big budget. My other concern is that we do need to open up the process a little bit. I was to the budget hearing this year. We had just one member of the public there, and that was me. And they held it at 1:00 in the afternoon. I want to get those meetings opened up so that people can go there after work and in the evening. And I think it's a better thing, the public will have some input into those budgets. And I think that's a very key thing. Also about the budget, we don't see any of the revenue expectations from the Commissioners. And so what we need to do is open that process up and see what all the revenue sources are from all sources, including what we may have in savings. So that's the main reason I'm running, is to make sure that I think we can get the property taxes down in this county. And I think that that's a key ingredient to us moving forward, especially in these times.
All right. Thank you very much. That is Tom Lurcher. Next we'll be going to Brady Belliston. Brady, give us an opening statement. We need to get to know you.
Well, I appreciate it, Carol. Thank you for hosting this, and also, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, the Realtors and the City Club. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to the voters today. I am Brady Belliston. I grew up in Idaho. I love this state. It's been a wonderful place to live and to raise our family. I've been married to my wife Sasha for 25 years, and she's definitely the better half of our partnership. And as a wonderful wife, we have four children, and we just became grandparents in December. So we're excited to enter that next phase of our life as grandparents. I wanted to run for Bonneville County Commissioner because I also saw some problems in the county, and I believe that over my life of experiences and development, that I have some talents and abilities that I think I can use to help at the County Commissioner level, and help preserve this great county and this great state of Idaho for future generations like our kids and grandkids. There's a few things that I'm concerned about. Number one is the growth that we're seeing in this county. Idaho has been discovered, and Eastern Idaho has been discovered. It's a wonderful place to live, and so that's not a surprise. But with over 1,000 people moving into our county yearly, we're starting to see the stress of that on our roads, our infrastructure, our intersections, our services. And I think that we really need to start planning ahead for that, or it's going to start controlling us. Also with the growth, I think that we need to look at our comprehensive plan, which was developed 25 years ago. It did get an update seven years ago, but it's something that we use to help dictate how the growth is going to go in our county. And I think that we need to update that by using collaboration with the citizens in our county, as well as the private sector and government as well. I'd also like to see us develop a comprehensive economic plan so that we can start planning for bringing in more businesses to the area, so that our kids and grandkids can make this their future homes with family wage-paying jobs. So that's the growth issue. The second issue is taxes, and property taxes are something that just don't go away. And I have felt the pinch of that, like many of you have, at times having a hard time coming up with the money to pay for property taxes. And as I've gone out and met with people, most people see the need for property taxes, and they don't even mind paying some property taxes to get the services that we need in this area. But I think everybody's concerned that the money is spent wisely, and that we keep property taxes as low as possible. And I think that's something that we can do successfully by working with some of our state delegation, on working on getting the mandates that the county is required to perform and do, to get them to fund some of those. And the last issue that I want to talk about is better communication. I do think it's key that you have a voice in county government. I would like to upgrade our county website. I would like to also have social media accounts where we can let people know what's going on in the county.
Thank you, Brady. John Walker, you are up. Tell us about yourself.
All right. Thank you, Carol. I'm John Walker, and I grew up in Bonneville County, in a small farming community just north of Idaho Falls called Coltman. And there I learned hard work ethics and how to enjoy the beautiful country that we have here, camping, fishing, and hunting along the river. When I was 11 years old, I went to work for a nearby little family-owned dairy to help with their 4:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. melkings. When I was 12, Marv Olson, the owner of the farm, had a heart attack. They didn't have any other kids in the area, and his wife asked me if I would take over the running of the dairy and the farm while she took care of her husband recovering from the heart attack. It was a lot of weight to put on the shoulders of a 12-year-old and a tremendous amount of trust. And you want to talk about a learning curve. I learned a great deal about budgeting, and finance, and hard work, and responsibility. That experience really set the course for my life. And I've spent my adult career in public service in Bonneville County. First at the sewer department, and then the police department, then the fire department, and finally as coroner in Bonneville County, where often I was the first person there to help people through one of the most difficult times in their life. My values are driven by the core values that I was raised with in a conservative Republican home, by conservative Republican neighbors and friends, and teachers in the education system. One thing that you can count on with me is the truth. And I'm always going to tell you the truth. You may not like hearing it sometimes. But my belief is in the citizens that live in Bonneville County, in this area. And I believe that given accurate, detailed information, they can make good decisions and support programs that are necessary here, and voice their opinion about programs that they don't believe in. And that's where the decisions for what we do in protecting and developing our county should rest, with the citizens in Bonneville County. You know, when I was coroner, we faced a really severe issue in this area with prescription overdose deaths. We had nine a month in Bonneville County alone. If we had nine COVID deaths a month in Bonneville County, the CDC and who would be camped out here? So I set up social media campaigning, worked closely with Carol and the news media agencies, and twice a week brought information to the public, so that they were aware of this problem. And we reduced the death rate not to less than nine deaths a year in Bonneville County through social media. So I'm experienced in communicating with the public, and in working on plans and developing plans that meet the needs and requirements of the people who live in Bonneville County. So now is the time to bring our community together and to work together to support our local economy. And I'm the guy to help do that. So vote John Walker.
John, while your mic is still hot, I'm going to start with you on questions, and then everybody will get to respond. And gentlemen, I neglected to tell you, but if you'd like to rebut somebody's answer, I can't see you, but if you just say, "May I comment?", I'll hear you. And absolutely can. You can absolutely do exchanges like that, so don't hesitate. So John, starting off with you, how do you describe your political ideology?
Well, as I mentioned in my introduction, I was raised in a very strong conservative Republican home. And I was raised by the parents of my friends, as you are in a community. My conservative values were tempered by a number of teachers that I had in the education system. Then I had the opportunity of serving two years in a foreign country that had a constitutional monarchy government that was heavily steeped in socialist programs. I came home with an understanding of how important it is to support our conservative values and work to do that. My wife and I also spent a two-year humanitarian mission in Eastern Russia under a communist dictatorship. And I support and advocateally believe in our freedoms here and the opportunity that we have to voice our opinion and to support our government in legal fashion. And so I guess you can say I'm a conservative Republican, because that's what I am. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Brady?
Well, thank you. I'm a conservative Republican. I believe that family values are the most important thing that we need to preserve in this country, as well as the rights of our citizens. And, you know, I've served in the private sector my entire career, and so my idea of government is the smaller the government, the better. I think we need less regulations, and we need to let free enterprise, let itself exercise. And I also believe that we need to get rid of regulations that get in the way of people being able to do what they can do in the private sector. I also believe that we need to have the people in our communities be the voice. And so if elected to County Commissioner, my philosophy would be to reach out to as many people as possible to hear what they have to say, so they are the real leaders in this community.
Tom?
Well, I think my conservative credentials speak for themselves in my record. As a Bonneville County Commissioner previously, you'll find that I was very conservative in the approach we took then. We were in another downturn at that time, and we got through those times by working within the means that we had. My voting record in the legislature is also a very conservative one, having sponsored some of the most conservative things that's happened there. One of those being HGR 5, which passed in our constitution to make sure that the legislature has the ability to review the rules of the agencies. And that has come into play big time, especially since Governor Little has become governor, because what they did last year was go through a comprehensive change in all of the rules. And that's, my credentials actually speak for themselves on the conservative issue.
Because you guys all sound very, very similar on your ideology, I'm going to throw something in here, a little bit of a kink, just to see if it helps our voters understand a little bit more of where you come from, a little bit of how conservative. So Tom, if I may start with you, how, would you consider yourself a fan or a supporter of the Idaho Freedom Foundation?
Carol, I'm glad you asked that question, because the Idaho Freedom Foundation is not conservatism. It is actually something else that's disguised as conservatism. And all the time they preach liberty, they're actually running us down a road that we cannot afford to take. They're preaching anarchy at every level, and that is a sad thing, especially when you see what has happened in the last few days, when we've had one of their main players saying that it was open season on policemen. And there is no room for that in Idaho at all, and that group is way out of control.
That would be a not a fan.
Not at all.
Check. All right, Brady?
Well, I'm not a member of the Freedom Foundation. I certainly respect, and I would respect anybody's opinion with the First Amendment of the United States, that they could have their ability to express their opinions. And so I respect that. I know that they try to rate politicians on how they vote and have a scale that they use. I don't think that would apply here in the County Commissioners' race. I will say this, I did not agree with some of the things they've done recently, most recently in the city of Meridian, where my parents live, where they published the address of a Meridian police officer and encouraged people to go to his home. I certainly don't agree with that. I think if we want to protest in this country, there are certainly places where we can go, like a courthouse, a park, a city building. But I certainly don't condone putting that kind of information up on the internet where people can go to somebody's private residence and make their voices heard there.
Thank you, Brady. John?
Thanks, Carol. And the answer is an absolute no. I do not align or support, or take support, from the Freedom Foundation or any of its members. If you look at how my campaign's funded, it's funded by local individuals, family, friends, and people in our community. And I have, sorry. When I started my campaign four years ago, I battled against the Freedom Foundation and their super funding against, in races. And I think that's wrong. I think our races need to be local races, controlled by local individuals, and I think you see that in my campaign.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Here's the next question. Let's see. John, we started with you. Brady, I'm going to start with you. That's all right? Okay. What do you think the role of County Commissioner is? And why are you qualified to fill that role?
Well, I believe the County Commissioners, they're running the county, an organization that has many jobs and responsibilities. And I've been in the private sector. I'm the only one running in this race that is not a politician, hasn't been in politics, and served for decades in some cases. I've been, I come from the private sector, and I've got a lot of experience. I've got a lot of experience running businesses, where I've had to make hard decisions. I've had to work under budgets. Sometimes I've even had to sell personal assets to make payroll and payroll taxes. And so I think those kind of experiences make me a perfect leader to go to the county level and deal with budgets and finding ways to do things more economically. I've also served as the chairman of the Iona Bonneville Sewer District for the last three years. I've been on that board for five years. I was recruited because I've been a real estate developer for 20 years. I have tons of experience in developing, in putting in infrastructure, and I believe that that experience is going to come in handy as we deal with the extreme growth that we're facing in our county right now.
Thank you, Brady. Tom?
Carol, County Commissioner's job is to oversee the overall operation of the county, to set the budgets. At times even they are required to act as a quasi-judicial body. They're the only, they're the only branch of government, really, that has all three roles, legislative, administrative, and judicial responsibilities. That's a little uncomfortable at times, but I am well-qualified because of my past actions. I'm also qualified because of my very unique relationship with a lot of the players that are still in the Idaho Legislature. And working with them and trying to prevent things, bad things happening from counties, I have a unique ability to deal with them in resolving those issues to the benefit of the counties.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Carol. County Commissioners fill the role that's assumed by mayors and city council in a city. And that's what County Commissioners do for the county. The same thing that legislators and the governor do for the state, that's really what County Commissioners do in the county. They manage the budget, they manage the local needs within the county. That includes road and bridge, and filling the potholes. That includes the courts, providing the facilities for the courts, and our local law enforcement through the sheriff's office. Now, I've worked in all of those areas. And I've worked with large budgets and large planning at the state level, at the regional level, and through our health districts. I've managed the budgets, so I understand the process. I worked in the Bonneville County budgeting system for 11 years. I understand the county government and how it needs to overlap and work with the agencies around it. And that's one of the strengths that I bring to the table, is the ability to bring multiple people to the table to talk about issues and come to a consensus.
Thank you. Tom, I believe you're up first. And correct me, guys, if at any time you know it should be you. Just say, "No, me first." Tom, there are about 116,000 people in Bonneville County, and one-third of that population is between the ages of 18 and 44. So what efforts could the county make to keep this steady workforce home, you know, down on the farm, once they've seen gay, berry, right? How are you going to keep that workforce here?
Well, that's an interesting question, Carol, because we do, for example, most of my family lives elsewhere, because they've gone, they've chosen other professions other than what I practice, and so they've had to go elsewhere. But they've excelled in everything they've done because of the work ethic that they received on the farm. And how do we do that? How do we do that to keep improving our community is a very difficult thing, but certainly our educational responsibilities here, my kids all were educated here, and those were good beginnings for them as they approached college. All eight of our children are college graduates. It was a good base for them, and they chose to move on other places. Be wonderful to have them all home, but their fields of occupations have not made that possible. But we do have to focus our attention on the youth and how we're going to keep them educated and ready to go.
If I may do my own follow-up on that, Tom. As I recall, you did not support the College of Eastern Idaho when we were first doing that. But you say, "Education is our key to keeping people home." Can you respond to that?
I can, Carol. And the reason why I decided to take the stand I did was because of my experience in the legislature. I saw move after move there to remove funding from the community colleges. And I thought at the time that we needed to at least address the possibility that if that funding disappears, then it's going to fall again to our property taxpayers.
Have you changed your mind?
You, Carol, what has happened in the interim is, once that passed, I was a strong supporter of making sure that the College of Eastern Idaho got its fair share of the funds from the state. So I, though I didn't change my mind and the problem that that presents for property taxpayers sometime down the line, I was a full supporter to make sure that they were adequately funded at the state level.
Thank you. John, let me read the question to you again, because we've gotten a little bit away from it. And then you can rebut anything that you've heard. 116,000 people in Bonneville County, a third of that population between the ages of 18 and 44. So as a County Commissioner, how are you going to sustain this steady workforce? How are you going to keep them in Bonneville County?
Thank you. As I said, I've grown up in Bonneville County, and I've watched Bonneville County grow from 42,000 people to this 116,000. And I believe that the single most effective way we can protect that particular group of people in this county is through education. We all face a point where we say, "We're going to move somewhere else and pursue a career opportunity," or "We're going to find one that we can pursue here to keep our families in this area." My wife is a retired schoolteacher. My daughter is a schoolteacher. My younger daughter works in the administration at Thunder Ridge High School. I've donated tens of thousands of hours in our schools to our students. I believe in education, and I believe that by educating people to the opportunities that are available, they'll make good choices, and that strengthens them in the decisions that they make. I believe in educating businesses to the opportunities that they have by strengthening their business, hiring more employees, and by bringing new businesses into the area, we provide a much larger work opportunity for the workforce that's here.
Brady?
Well, I, me and my entire family almost fit in that demographic you're talking about. My wife and I are just barely out of it. So I'm concerned that my kids and my grandkids stay in this area. And I think there's two things we have to look at. Number one, do we have good-paying jobs here, and do they continue to come into the area so that our kids can get educated and then end up settling here and working with a good-paying job? And my background in business, I think, is key to this, and the relationships I have in the business community. And, you know, we talk about a comprehensive growth plan for the growth in the county, but I think we need a comprehensive economic growth plan to attract businesses and continue to recruit businesses to come to this area, so our kids can have those future jobs. Secondly is the growth. They have to have somewhere to live. And I think that with my background in real estate developing, serving on the Iona Bonneville Sewer District, those are two areas where I have expertise in this area, working with our local builders and developers to continually develop areas where these young families can move into, they can afford the houses, and they can set up their families here. I would like to rebut about the college, if I could.
Yes.
So, you know, we have the community college here, and, you know, I've got four children. A couple of my children have been able to go to four-year universities, and that fit them very well. But I do have a daughter that that does not fit her well for reasons I'm not going to get into. But a community college route was a better route for her, a smaller atmosphere where I felt like she could learn and grow. And so I did vote for the community college, and one of the reasons I did vote for it is because it was up to the voters, and I thought the funding was clear, that we, if we wanted to choose to help pay for this, that we could. And I was willing to help pay, even though it made my property taxes a little bit more, I was willing to do it.
Any other comments?
Carol?
Yes.
I might remind you that since this is a levy that's placed on by the community college, it affects different classes of property differently. For small business and agriculture and even rental properties, it's hundreds of dollars. It's not very much for the homeowners. So it's really difficult, looking at the big picture, it's difficult to say, you know, it's okay to charge more to certain taxpayers than others. So it's a balancing act, but I do support what they're doing there. They're doing a wonderful job, and they're trying desperately to stay within their means.
Yes, Brady?
Well, just a follow-up to that. I think that when we have to make decisions in our community, that it should be placed before the voters, and they can make the choice. And I also believe that there should be a clear definition of where the funding is going to come from, so the voters truly can decide, "Do I want to pay for this or not?" Because that's who's going to be paying for this. And whatever tax it may be, they are going to be the ones paying for it. And I think they've done a fantastic job at the community college, especially with training medical personnel, nurses and other medical personnel to stay in our community, and I know many people have taken that route.
Do we feel like we've exhausted the topic? We're good? John, I think you're the first one now. Does that sound right to you guys?
Sure.
To go with the next question? All right. Let's talk a little bit about this world we're living in right now, John. Idaho's unemployment rate is just awful right now. Well, it's obviously, we all know the reason why. It was not awful at all prior to COVID-19, but if you get elected as County Commissioner, what are you going to do to jumpstart our economy?
Everything I possibly can. And that starts with, again, educating businesses to how they can safely open and get their doors open and start doing business as quickly as possible. I believe that the citizens of Bonneville County are more than capable of making good decisions about how decisions about how to live their lives. And I see that when I go out in terms of social distancing and people wearing masks to protect themselves or to protect others. That's important. And when it comes to jumpstarting our businesses, that's where it has to start. It starts with buying locally, which we do. We buy locally, okay? Avoid buying off the internet. Make calls to local stores. See if they have what you need and buy directly from them. Talk to your neighbors about buying locally and supporting local businesses. Go to the restaurants, go to the stores. My wife supports local businesses a lot. We eat out at least once a day. That's really important. In terms of the long-term approach, continuing to make our county a comfortable, easy place for young businesses and startup businesses, and to encourage businesses to grow and stay here. And I think we've done a good job for that. Thank you.
Tom, you're county commissioner, and the whole county's in a world of hurt, just like every other county in Idaho. What are you going to do to jumpstart the economy?
Well, Carol, I'm not sure there's a lot that county Commissioners can do, except I'm going to keep coming back to this time and time again. We have got to get our arms around our property tax because it is increasing substantially, and people are really struggling right now. Is there going to be enough revenue to meet a $90 million budget this year in Bonneville County, for example? We've got to hold taxes low. That is the very first part of jumpstarting an economy. You can't keep draining more money away from our citizens without having a dampening effect on recovery at this point. This is a tough time. People are really struggling right now, and I don't think the economic consequences of this have even begun yet. That's yet to hit us, and it's going to be a really interesting time in the next year or so in trying to recover from this.
Thank you. Tom, Brady?
Well, I think we need to get businesses open as soon as possible and put the trust in our local community, our citizens and our business owners, that they will be respectful and they'll take the proper measures to protect each other. And I have confidence that they will. At a commissioner level, I have a couple of concerns. One, property taxes are going to come due here in June. Our state and federal governments have already extended deadlines to file, you know, our taxes, and I think that that might be something we need to look at the county level to delay property tax payments, not get away, not do away with them, but delay them a little bit to give people time to come up with that money. Secondly, I think the government needs to get out of the way as much as possible. Any red tape that we can cut and get out of the way to help businesses take off again, I think we need to do it. I firmly believe in capitalism. I think it's wonderful, and I think that if we can find ways to lower the taxes and keep them low, that I know that our businesses will use that money, reinvest it, and people will invest it in our community, and I just think it will have great dividends in the future.
Brady, while your mic's hot, let me lay out a scenario for you. Let's say that Bonneville County is competing with Bannock County for a really great, you know, new business to come in. As a county commissioner, could you see yourself offering incentives? You know, a year off of no taxes, whatever would, you know, you could come up with that would fall into the legal realm, but some kind of incentive that might get that business to locate here versus another county?
Yeah, that's a great question. I've participated in the process even recently. I've attended a lot of the commissioner meetings, and one I attended recently was just this kind of scenario. And I believe the Commissioners are doing a good job with that. I think it's a case-by-case basis. I think you have to look at many factors. How many jobs is that business going to bring in? How much tax revenue are they going to bring in? So I do believe that tax abatement can be used. I don't know that it needs to be used often, but I am in favor of attracting more businesses to this area. And in some cases, that might be a tool that we can use to get them to locate here. But I really believe that we have to do our homework, we have to study it, and on a case-by-case basis decide if that's something that's going to be a huge benefit, because we will get more taxes from these businesses in the future. But we have to be careful not to do it too often because it would push the tax burden in the immediate timeframe to other people. But I do believe it's a tool that can be used if we use it prudently.
John?
Thanks. Am I answering the first part of the question or the second part of the question?
Yeah, and just, would you use incentives? You know, let's say you're elected county commissioner.
Okay.
What incentives might you use, if you use them at all?
Okay, first, I believe the strength in our society is in its business-friendly environment and our low cost of living. And when you compare us with the counties around us and the states around us, we're a great place to have businesses. Second, I think educating other businesses about coming here and marketing us, marketing our area is a far more important approach to drawing businesses in, showing them what we have to offer. In some cases, it might be right to offer them incentives. The problem is the burden of emergency services on that property starts the day they start breaking ground. So we're supporting or subsidizing those incentives with tax revenue from the rest of Bonneville County while we're building a business that's not paying into the system yet. So I'm really apprehensive about offering those types of incentives to bring businesses in. I think the way to do it is to bring them in, invite them, and show them what we have to offer.
Tom?
Well, Carol, that's one of the things that's most interesting about this. We love the growth. We've been enthralled with that, and growth generally is a good thing because it's supposed to pay for itself. But if you offer this type of incentive, and the only ones that the Commissioners can offer are property tax breaks, what happens then is you shift the responsibility for growth to those who are already paying full bore on their taxes. So it causes a tax shift. That's not a very good idea. We've seen that it's not a good idea because it brings with it more growth, more problems, so that growth doesn't pay for itself. So we have to be extremely careful in how we apply incentives to them, because what happens is we don't want, we absolutely cannot continue to put these property taxes on existing taxpayers.
Rebut. Brady?
Yeah, just so people are aware, I did say you have to do it on a case-by-case basis, and the Commissioners have latitude. You know, you can do tax abatement from one to five years. You could do it one year, you could do it three years. It's up to the Commissioners. And I really do feel like our current Commissioners have taken it on a case-by-case basis, like I said, have been in many of those. And they look at the numbers and the math. There's a lot of math to that. And I do believe in growth. I do think growth is going to bring in more revenue to our county and more high-paying jobs. And I do believe on a case-by-case basis, we should look at it.
Great. Tom?
We've seen an example of what this does. We have a steel company now in Yukon that has been really, has brought growth with it. It hasn't necessarily benefited the community there, other than that there are some jobs, but they brought a workforce with them, which caused more growth. And yet, the Bonneville County Commissioners chose to write off half their valuation, which put more responsibility on our farms and our businesses, which are struggling particularly at this time.
Everybody comfortable with that? All right, the next question then goes to, I have absolutely no idea who might be first. John, you want to be first on this?
Sure.
Just because Brady brought that up about, you know, the Commissioners right now. On a scale of one to 10, how would you rate the current county commission?
Okay, I would give them a solid B. And that's based on my experience working with the Commissioners over the last 15 years and watching the improvements that have been made in a number of areas in the last four years. So if we're talking about the last four-year election cycle for this particular seat, I'd give them a solid B. I give them a B because I grew up in an education family, and I know how tough it is to get an A, and I think there's further that we can go to accomplish those things.
Brady, the question was on a scale of one to 10, but just to keep it in the same frame, let's do grades. What grade would you give this present county commissioner?
Well, I think that's difficult because I think in some areas, they're doing a really good job, and in others, they're doing pretty good. I'd probably give him a B+. You know, look, they've been in there a long time. Roger Christian's been in there a long time, that the people have continued to elect him. So he has done some things well. I think that, you know, as the county continues to get bigger, they've had to expand. And instead of going out and building brand-new buildings, they've found property around the courthouse. They've found it cheap. They fixed it up and made it work. And I think they try to be fiscally conservative. But I've talked to them in some areas that they've even told me that I can help with. Our comprehensive plan, I think we're behind on growth, way behind. And that's something I will jump into day one. I've already started in finding ways that we can catch up with that and get ahead of it before it controls us. Secondly, I think we're behind on our technology and social media. I know Brian Powell's working on a system there, a computer system to help integrate all the offices of the county. But we don't have social media presence, which I think is important in this day and age, and other things that I think I can help with.
And Tom? Grade for the present county Commissioners?
Well, Carol, I hate to be the fly in the ointment here, but I don't give them a very high score at all. And I think it's mainly because they are not accessible to the public. They have themselves locked down behind airport security, and what happens is people are not comfortable with having to go through that to go see their Commissioners about a problem. I think that they're way behind the curve. They're always responding after the fact. Take 45th East, for example, where they are woefully behind on seeing that problems are taken care of on that road with a brand-new access to a brand-new high school, and they are way behind. You can't lead from behind. You've got to lead and lead now and make sure that we address these problems ahead of time. We've had plenty of worrying about some of these things, but we've just ignored them. So I'd probably, on a scale of one to 10, grade them somewhere down around about a four.
Maybe a D+? Keeping it kind of in the grades category since we sort of switched it there, so maybe a D+ C-?
Well, C is average. And I don't, Carol, I don't believe in average people. I think we can do better than average. A C grade is mediocre at best, and I don't believe in that. I believe in excellence.
Thank you. Brady, you kind of brought this up technologically. You thought maybe we should speed it up just a little bit or raise the bar a bit in Bonneville County. Both Ammon and Idaho Falls are expanding municipal fiber optics. So do you support cities' ability to install fiber optics infrastructure? And as a county commissioner, can it spread into the county?
Well, I think fiber optics is very important. I get a little frustrated when I go to some of the county meetings. We sit in the chamber, they've got televisions and other technology there, and they don't use it in the meetings. Maybe it's talking about a piece of property, and they put a little map up on the wall that you can't even see. At the Iona-Bonneville sewer district where I'm the chairman, when you go into a meeting, our people there have the technology going. Everybody in the meeting can see and hear clearly. And I think that's something we've got to get on board with in Bonneville County, and I am totally ready to roll with that. And there's lots of things we can do. That's just one example. And, you know, some of the people have been serving in the county for a long time, maybe don't have that expertise. I believe in bringing in some of the youth. We could have internships in our county. We're bringing the youth from our local colleges and universities that can help train a lot of these great people. We have longevity in the county, which is awesome, but I think we could infuse some of this new technology by bringing in the younger people and doing some internships and helping train how we can use the technology that's available.
And in particular, fiber optics.
What's your specific question?
Yay, as a county commissioner, I'm going to make it happen. Or nay? Or it's a city's responsibility?
I would be in favor, as a county commissioner, of helping in any way possible. But I do believe that most of what we should do in government, if we can, to keep government small, should go through the private sector.
John?
Okay, with Idaho Falls, it made perfectly good sense because they had utility rightaways. They own the power poles, they have the electric utility. So for Idaho Falls to start that system made perfectly good sense, and it set a great example for other municipalities. As it extends outward into the county, I agree, that should probably fall under the private sector, but it should be encouraged at all turns from the local government. It's important for us to draw the line between what government should be involved in and what it shouldn't be involved in. And I think there's a great opportunity for the private sector to come in and provide fiber optics. Wish we had it at our home. It's really important in the society that we live in.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, Carol, this is one of the things that's been really interesting for me to follow because, just trying to navigate the current Bonneville County website, it's a nightmare, and you find the links are in six-point type on the page and very difficult to find those things. So it does have to be upgraded, and they need to be furnishing all kinds of information, backup documentation for their hearings. Take a look at Teton County's website, for example. You'll find all kinds of links and information, public information about what's going to be happening at hearings, and they have the opportunity to, you have the opportunity to review those before you even go to a hearing, and that is really definitely lacking. That's what I'm talking about when I'm saying, open the process up. As far as fiber optics, let me tell you how bad it is. Fiber optics goes right past my driveway, and I can't hook up. But I don't think that's a responsibility of the county to address that, other than probably jaw-boning the company a little bit so we could hook up in the rural areas.
So more in the private sector again?
Absolutely.
Rather than it being a county responsibility? Thank you. I have absolutely no idea who's going to go first. I've lost track. Is it Tom? Tom, thank you. Very good. All right, thank you. Guys, Tom, you start. If we were to look at your campaign finance report, who would we find your largest donor?
Well, my largest donor so far is $500 from a good friend that lives right here in Bonneville County. Everything is pretty well self-financed to this point, but I do have some contributions, but $500 is the biggest one from someone right here in the county.
Brady?
Well, the biggest contributor to my campaign has been myself, and I felt like I should have some skin in the game, and so I'm willing to do that and be my number-one supporter in running this campaign. But I think if you look at my campaign finance sheet, which I started campaigning a long time ago, and I was grateful I got a lot of that done before the COVID-19 broke out. But what I'm proud about of my donors is I have donors all over the board. I've reached out to everybody. I haven't favored any particular one group. I've been upfront with people about where I stand, and sometimes when people were considering donating to my campaign, in the course of the conversation, it came up that they had a problem with somebody else who happened to be also donating to my campaign. And what I was proud of is they donated to me anyway. I think people have been able to sit down and talk to me and realize that I'm a genuine person, that I'm not going to have any favoritism, that I'll be fair, but not give preferential treatment. And so I'm proud of my donors, and I appreciate everybody that's donated to my campaign.
But you're the number-one donor?
Yes.
To yourself. John?
Correct.
Okay, I fit into that same category. I put more into my campaign than any other single donation I've received. Step away from that. The next two largest donors would be my next-door neighbor and a cousin who lives here in Bonneville County. So my campaign's been funded by people who, for the most part, work blue-collar jobs and work very hard at them, and that's really important to me. I think it's important to understand that I'm not funded by big business. I'm not funded by developer corporations or political entities with agendas to drive. I'm funded by individuals and families, most of whom are close friends, or people who know me from my work experience and who believe that I can do the best job. And that's why they've supported this campaign and volunteered their time. My campaign manager, lives in Bonneville County, grew up here. I've spent all of my campaign money in Bonneville County, with the exception of a couple of little things we couldn't acquire here. And I think that's important.
Thank you, John. Brady, first to you. We understand from the INL that there's the potential of huge growth out there because that is the place where you can do experiments. That is going to be the place. And so how's our infrastructure? And as a county commissioner, what could you do to help it? That little, you know, where there could be intersections or bridges that have to be replaced so that big things can be hauled over and that can't be hauled over now. So you get right into office, and you see this huge growth coming. What can you, as a county commissioner, do to get ready for that?
Well, the INL is absolutely integral and a big part of our community, and we need to keep it that way. And the state of Idaho also recognizes that. If you listen to our governor and other state leaders, they recognize as well. So the first thing that I would do is I'd want to reach out to our state leaders and say, listen, if this is so important to the state of Idaho, we're going to need some help and get some funding to help with this infrastructure. I also think that, you know, if we can find ways to lower property taxes and get the state to fund the mandates that they require us to do, that we'll have more money that we we can take from that property tax revenue to put into infrastructure because it's everywhere. We're growing in every direction. It's not just in one part of our county or another and so I would be reaching out everywhere I possibly can to get finances put together to start working on this immediately because if we don't, we're going to see some things that have happened over in the Treasure Valley and the Boise area where you get behind and then growth starts to control you instead of the other way around.
John?
You know, my first experience with the mayor of Idaho Falls was an exceptional mayor that had a 50-year written plan. Yeah, 50 years and it was a living document that was updated every three months and that's really when I started to buy into the concept that we have to have truly long-term planning that's completely comprehensive and that's really what a long-term comprehensive plan is. It's a plan that looks at all of the potential growth and all the potential areas and how we can support that growth and what we need to be doing every month to make sure that we're ahead of the curve. Challenging times to look at growth, but if you look at the fuel rod facility that didn't go in and when we started looking at that fuel rod facility going in just short of the INL border, the projects to widen the road, they're included in the process to help fund and develop the improvements for the Arco Highway, Broadway, so that if that facility did come here, we were in a position to be ahead of the curve instead of behind the curve. So the planning process means bringing all of those people to the table and getting all of their investiture in both financial and the actual plan to make it work. Thank you.
Tom?
Carol, as growth comes to the county because of this new project that is coming to the site, we don't know for sure whether it's coming or not, but it looks like a good thing that is going to happen to our community. I think as county commissioners, we should be engaged in the process of making the adequate plans and making sure that the financing is in place from other sources to take care of that huge growth. I'm not talking about just growth in the community. That should pay for itself if we're doing things correctly, but growth in highways out that way, it's going to take a federal, state and maybe some county planning upfront to make that happen and happen correctly and above all, we want to make sure that we don't have this kind of thing fall at the feet of our county taxpayers.
John, how do you describe the current relationship between Bonneville County and the city of Idaho Falls in your view?
Oh, that's a tough question. You know, I know most of the city councilmen, I know the mayor and I've worked with the county commissioners for a long time and I know that sometimes it's difficult to come together on issues that you see opposite ends of and come to a consensus of opinion. My experience has been that if we can get together at the table and start out with the idea that the very end of this project needs to be what's best for the people in our area, that then we can approach working towards that end goal in a way that brings us all together. And I've done this at the county level, I've done this at the health district levels throughout the state and I've done this at the state level. So I'm really experienced in bringing in very diverse individuals with very different agendas and helping them come together for a consensus that works things out. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with Mayor Casper and the Idaho Falls Council, with Sean Coletti and the Ammon Council in sorting out the area of impact issues and the longstanding problems that have existed and coming to a consensus on those that will work well for all of us.
Tom, how do you think the relationship is?
Well, Carol, I suppose you're talking about the city of Idaho Falls, but we need to talk about the relationship we have with other cities as well. How about the relationship the county has with Swan Valley, for example? And it's got to be improved upon. Now, I understand there's friction and there always is friction and some envy between levels of government, but I have to tell you that as a county commissioner previously, we had a bickering and fighting going on between the sheriff's office and the police department that was just almost unbearable. I led a fight. This has never been published or anything else, but I went and worked with the city council, a member of the city council who is also over law enforcement and we worked the problem out and got them working together and that's one of my strengths is getting people to work together. We've got common goals, we've got common problems. We need to take every opportunity to meet with them and figure out how we're going to handle this stuff.
Brady?
One of my strengths, I believe, is building relationships. I'm a people person and when I decided I was going to run for commissioner, I reached out to all the mayors in our county. One of the first people I met with was, you know, the mayor of Idaho Falls and Rebecca Casper and I had a great talk for about an hour and a half and we talked about some of the problems and the issues. There is a little friction there, but I don't see that as something that cannot be fixed and repaired and I think that we can disagree without being disagreeable with all of our partners in the county. All these cities live within our county. All these city residents are county residents and so we need to have relationships with these people. I've met with many members of all the city councils of all of these cities and I've met with all the elected officials in the county and all the offices and that's my strength and that's what I will continue to do. If you look at my campaign, I think it's a perfect example of how my leadership style exists and that is a collaborator. I will reach out to all of them, I will form relationships with all of them and no matter what happens, I will never close my door on any other leaders. My door will always be open.
All right, gentlemen, that is the end of our questions and it's now time for your three-minute wrap. If there is a topic that didn't get asked that you feel is really important for your voters to know about you, bring it up in your closing statement. Tom, we started with you. Brady, would you like to go first with your closing statement?
Yeah, I'd be happy to go first. I'm so grateful for the opportunity to have this forum and to speak to the voters today to get to know me better. You know, when I first started my campaign and announced I was going to run, one of the first things that happened is I got a little note in the mail from an 86-year-old lady with a $25 donation and her note said, "Brady, thank you for having the courage to run for office." And I can tell you, this has been an experience that I've never had. I'm the one in the group that is not a politician. I have not served in politics before, so this is new, but let me tell you, this has been an absolutely wonderful experience. I have enjoyed every aspect of it and the best part about it is I started early, I started back in December and I got a lot of work done before COVID-19, which enabled me to get in front of a lot of people. As I mentioned, I got in front of elected officials, I got in front of business leaders and I got in front of you, the citizens of this county. I've made tons of relationships and made new friendships and it's been absolutely awesome, so I'm happy to run for county commissioner. During this time today, I hope that you've learned a few things about me. Number one, I have three goals. One, to help plan and manage growth for the future. Number two, taxes are important to me and they're a burden on us and I want to try to make them as less as I possibly can. And number three, we have technology and things that we can use to be better communicators in the commissioner's office. The other thing that I hope you've found out about me is that I'm a businessman, not a politician. I bring a lot of talents and abilities and leadership styles that I've been able to develop over the years from being a real estate developer for almost two decades. I've got experience in that. I've done it. I've run many small companies. I've had to make the hard decisions. I've been through the ups and the downs of the economy and so those are things that I've learned in real-life experience that I think give me unique experience that I can bring to the commissioner's office. I love Bonneville County, I love the state of Idaho and I love the United States of America and I hope, I really do hope that I get the opportunity to serve. This has been something that I knew since my teenage years, that at some point I was going to jump in to public service and I've just kind of waited and I've done things along the way like serve on boards, like the INL Bonneville Sewer District Board, Boy Scouts of America. I've coached many youth teams, including three years at Bonneville High School. I've enjoyed all these experiences and I think along the way, it has prepared me for this opportunity to run for Bonneville County Commissioner. I really do think that we have a wonderful county. I think that our commissioners have done a good job, but I think there are some areas, and I've spoken with them about this, that we can do better and that is how I developed my three goals for the county, is talking to the commissioners, talking to the public, talking to the private sector and saying, what are some things that you think we can do better in Bonneville County? That's how I came up with my goals and I hope that you elect me and give me the chance to fulfill these and make Bonneville County a better place.
Thank you, Brady. John?
Thanks, Carol. And first I want to thank the Idaho Falls City Club, the Chamber of Commerce, the Realtors Association that have made this possible. It is an incredibly challenging time to be campaigning. And today we've talked about a number of issues, taxes, growth, the COVID virus and its effect on our local economy. And again, I just want to say, I believe it's really important for us to be actively supporting our local businesses and protecting our local economy and helping them come out as quickly and safely as possible. The governor's come out with a great plan today, the city of Idaho Falls announced yesterday to safely get our businesses open and participate in doing that in the right way and I think that's really important. I could spend a lot of time talking about me and why I'm the best guy for this job, but what's really important is what you as individuals in Bonneville County think and what you need and what's most important is that we hear from you. So please reach out, talk to us. Your choices, your decisions are what's most important in your government. I've been in parts of the world where you people don't have the option to voice, don't have the option to participate in government and it's so extremely important here. So all of you that haven't ever voted, please request a ballot and vote, participate in local government because this is where your vote can count. This is where your voice can be heard and you have to vote in order for that to happen. Yeah, my door is always open. I've run a social campaign that makes it fairly obvious, my ability to reach out and participate and talk to people that I've never met and to hear their opinions and to respond to those opinions in a very timely fashion. So I've proven that I'm good at that. I've proven that I'm good at managing budgets and managing incredibly large and intricate, detailed processes and programs and bringing them to fruition. Part of that's visible in Idaho Stand-Up Readiness Plan and the pandemic plan that allowed the governor to make quick decisions about the things that he's done based on really good, sound knowledge. And I've been part of that planning process for the entire state. I want to bring that home and work on that in Bonneville County so that we have a very solid, completely comprehensive future plan for the next 50 years so that we can guarantee protecting Bonneville County so that my kids and grandkids can have the same opportunities here that I did. And what I'm talking about is allowing me to take those ideals and principles that were learned by a 12-year-old boy who was handed a dairy and a farm to run and allowing me to put those skills to work for you now so that we can protect Bonneville County in the growth, in the taxes, in the planning and for our homes and our kids and our grandkids. There's some cool tax incentives that already exist in Bonneville County that nobody's talked about, the homeowner's exemption and two other exemptions in the state that people need to be aware of. So vote John Walker and we'll get this done.
Tom, you want to bring us home?
Thank you again, Carol. This has been an interesting experience today. I'd 10 times rather be speaking in front of a crowd, it's more comfortable certainly, but I have to tell you that I do appreciate the opportunity that's been afforded us today for you to get to know us a little bit better. I think a lot of people know me already and what I've delivered on over the years and that has been always my commitment to the people of this state, of our county and Legislative District 32 and the other two districts that I represented in my time in the legislature, but I am dedicated to doing that service and what has happened, you asked my wife, I have traveled thousands and thousands of miles at my own expense just to take care of constituent problems over a legislative district that's 400 miles long and two miles wide. So I have to tell you that that is the biggest joy in my life, is to associate with the good people of this county and this is where we chose to live. I just want to close with, my biggest goal again is taxes and I want you to take a look at this picture. Now, there have been times in my life when I felt just like this cowboy down here, holding on to the reins of a horse tied on to his saddle and he's having a terrible time just surviving and a lot of our taxpayers feel just like this cowboy now, that they wonder how they're going to make it through this time and I commit to you that as your next county commissioner, that I will dedicate myself to looking out for you, the property taxpayer of Bonneville County. That is my commitment and I encourage you to vote for Tom Lurcher.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today. I have to agree with you, I, prior to the last couple of these, have never done interviews or moderated any kind of a debate in this fashion. It is odd, but I think we're making the best of a bad situation and it's working and thank you so much for being willing to participate and just having the guts to run for office. I think it takes a certain kind of stamina and fortitude just to run for office these days. This wraps up today's luncheon series. Our next one is Tuesday of next week and it'll be our sheriff's candidates and so we hope you'll be able to join us for lunch again on Tuesday. Just remember, the primary is coming up, I mean, May 1st, I think is tomorrow. We're in May. Hello, May, it's primary month, so you have no time, no time to just joke around. Please get your absentee ballot right now. You can get it online, idaho.gov.org? Somebody correct me? Can you remember? Idahovotes.gov. Idahovotes.gov. I've already got mine laying on the kitchen counter, I'm going to vote tonight. I'm in Bingham County, so I can't vote for any of these guys. Thank you so much for joining us. Now pack up your garbage and throw it away nicely and clean up the lunchroom and everybody back to work if you can go to work. Goodbye.